Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, August 4th. I'll now call this meeting in order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Lada.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Al Baker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Chrisman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if willing and able, could everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Now, look for a motion to approve the regular meeting of July 21st, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? And any from the public? Seeing none, requires a voice vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then, special presentations, we have a presentation from T.W. Ingham with the Human Rights Commission, just some updates from some of the recent state legislature. Thank you, T.W.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the staff, council members, and members of the public. For those who don't know me, my name is T.W. Ingham. I am the Chair of the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission. Tonight, I will be giving an educational presentation on the Human Rights Commission response and continued efforts after two major pieces of legislation in the state of Iowa took effect on July 1st. The first is State File 418 relating to Sex and Gender, commonly referred to as the Anti-Trans Bill. The second is House File 856 relating to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, commonly referred to as the Anti-DEI Bill. Regarding the work of the Human Rights Commission, these two bills are thought to be the most influential in the state of Iowa since the Civil Rights Act of 1964. My presentation today is given as my authority as the Chair of the Human Rights Commission and in my capacity to act as spokesperson for the Commission on subjects on which the Commission has taken a position or stand. To further gain the support of the HRC and to empower the HRC members, the members did vote unanimously to allow me to speak to the council tonight on their behalf and provide these materials. This presentation will be educational and will be given to provide facts and guidance regarding the steps we must take and how we are to proceed moving forward. This presentation is in no way promoting, promulgating, or advocating any official opinion or policy of the City of Cedar Falls. Statements referencing terms and ideas referenced in legislation that has been prohibited under state law are used tonight to illuminate these topics as examples and educate the City Council, staff, and the public in our capacity and requirement to do so as the Human Rights Commission. Later in this presentation, I will speak on events, activities, and promotions that the Human Rights Commission has participated in or created in the past and changes that must be made in the future to comply with this legislation. This is in no way to be construed as a workaround of the law or to avoid prosecution under state law. I am simply providing updates on how the Human Rights Commission is complying with this legislation in its role as the leading authority in Cedar Falls for matter on human rights. At certain moments of my presentation, I may pause momentarily as I gather my thoughts or to think of a way to present facts in accordance with the laws passed or to ensure that I am representing the Human Rights Commission in the manner I should. I ask that any questions for myself or the Commission wait until the end of the presentation to allow me to complete. The first bill I would like to discuss is State File 418 entitled "An Act Relating to Sex and Gender, Including Those and Related Terms for Purposes of Statutory Construction: Indications of a Person's Sex on Certain Vital Records, Gender Identity Under the Iowa Civil Rights Act, and School Curricula Related to Gender Theory." This bill is the first bill in the history of the United States of America to remove protections of a class under the Civil Rights Act in their respective state. Under SF 418, the focus is on the removal of protections from discrimination based on, quote, "gender identity," end quote. While the law itself does not define the term "gender identity" in its text, it references that gender shall not be considered a synonym or shorthand expression for expressed gender, gender expression, or gender role. Gender expression is defined as "the way a person externally performs or signifies their gender identity, especially through habits of dressing, grooming, behaving, speaking, etc." I have found, independently, that gender identity is defined as a person's inner sense of being male, female, or another gender, usually developed during early childhood as a result of parental rearing practices and societal influences and strengthened during puberty by hormonal changes. There are three main components to this bill, with each having impact on Iowans and how they interact with their world, as well as the protection they have under the Civil Rights Act and the advocacy and support that they can expect from their human and civil rights commissions. The first is the mandate that birth certificates in the state of Iowa must either be listed with male or female at birth unless the sex of a child cannot be determined at birth, in which there is a time period of no more than six months to allow the parents to obtain any diagnosis or testing from a healthcare provider to determine the child's sex, male or female. The legislation also removes the acceptance of a licensed physician and surgeon affirming that an individual has changed their sex designation on any official state documents, specifically birth certificates, if they have had such surgical procedure prior to or after this bill has taken effect. The second portion of this law is the most impactful regarding the work of the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission. In our effort to support our community in matters of discrimination in public spaces as well as in places of employment, federal employment law and state law are provided as the basis for determining categories of discriminatory actions and those who are protected. Prior to this law taking effect, when posting positions for employment online for certain jobs through the state, there is a mandated statement of anti-discriminatory practices. That statement must include in some form that the employer will not discriminate in hiring on the basis of race, ethnicity, national origin, gender, age, physical disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, marital status, or status as a veteran. As of July 1st, the term "gender identity" has been removed from this statement. Under SF 418, it is no longer illegal for the following actions to be considered discriminatory for individuals based on their gender identity in the state of Iowa. These items are taken directly from the legislation and as follows. Refusal to hire, accept, register, classify, or refer for employment to discharge an employee or to otherwise discriminate in employment against any employee. Labor organizations or the employees, agents, or members thereof to refuse to admit membership any applicant, to expel any member, or to otherwise discriminate against any applicant for membership, any member in the privileges, rights, or benefits of such membership. Employer, employment agency, labor organization, or the employees, agents, or members thereof to directly or indirectly advertise or in any other manner indicate or publicize that individuals are unwelcome, objectionable, not acceptable, or not solicited for employment or membership unless based on the nature of the occupation. Any bona fide religious institution or its educational facility, association, corporation, society with respect to any qualifications for employment based on religion when such qualifications are related to a bona fide religious purpose. The practice of discriminating against employees by paying wages to such an employee at a rate less than the paid rate to other employees. It is the policy of the state to correct and rapidly as possible to eliminate discriminatory wage practices, that statement meaning that the state will no longer correct those discriminatory wage practices on the basis of gender identity. It shall be an unfair discriminatory practice for any employer or agent of any employer to discriminate against any employee by paying wages to such employee at a rate less than the rate paid to other employees who are employed within the same establishment for equal work on jobs. Pay differentials based on any other factor. Regarding public accommodations, to refuse or deny any person accommodations, advantages, facilities, services, or privileges. To directly or indirectly advertise or in any other manner indicate or publicize that the patronage of persons or any persons is unwelcome, objectionable, not acceptable, or not solicited. In regards to housing, to refuse to sell, rent, lease, assign, sublease, refuse to negotiate or to otherwise make available or deny any real property or housing accommodation or part, portion, or interest therein. To discriminate against any person in the terms, conditions, or privileges of the sale, rental, lease assignment, or sublease of any real property or housing accommodation. To directly or indirectly advertise or in any other manner indicate or publicize that the purchase, rental, lease, assignment, or sublease of any real property or housing accommodation on any part, portion, or interest therein is unwelcome, objectionable, not acceptable, or not solicited. To discriminate against the lessee or purchaser of any real property or housing accommodation or part, portion, or interest of the real property or housing accommodation, or against any prospective lessee or purchaser of the property or housing accommodation, or any part, portion, or interest therein is unwelcome, objectionable, not acceptable, or not solicited. To discriminate against the lessee or purchaser of any real property or housing accommodation or part, portion, or interest of the real property or housing accommodation of persons who may from time to time be present in or on the lessees or owner's premises for lawful purposes at the invitation of the lessee or owner as friends, guests, visitors, relatives, or in any similar capacity. A person shall not induce or attempt to induce another person to sell or rent a dwelling by representations regarding the entry or prospective entry into a neighborhood of a person. A person shall not represent to a person that a dwelling is not available for inspection, sale, or rental when the dwelling is available for inspection, sale, or rental. A person shall not deny another person access to or membership or participation in a multiple listing service, real estate brokers at organization or other service, organization or facility relating to the business of selling or renting dwellings, or discriminate against a person in terms or conditions of access, membership, or participation in such organization. A person whose business includes engaging in residential real estate-related transactions shall not discriminate against a person in making a residential real estate-related transaction. In regards to credit, a creditor to refuse to enter into a consumer credit transaction or impose finance charges or other terms or conditions or other terms more onerous than those regularly extended by that creditor to consumers of similar economic backgrounds. A person authorized or licensed to do business in the state to refuse to loan or extend credit or to impose terms or conditions more onerous than those regularly extended to persons of similar economic backgrounds. Creditors refuse to offer credit life or health and accident insurance. Prohibiting a person engaging in the business of furnishing appraisals of real estate into considering other factors in appraising real estate. I know that was a lot of dry information. The basis of listing each of those individually is to specify all of the regulations where it is no longer illegal to discriminate against a person based on their gender identity in the state of Iowa. The third section of this law restricts the teaching of, quote/unquote, "gender theory" in schools in the state of Iowa for grades kindergarten through sixth grade. This law defines gender theory as, quote, "the concept that an individual may properly be described in terms of internal sense of gender that is incongruent with the individual's sex as either male or female. Gender theory includes the concept that an individual who experiences distress or discomfort with the individual's sex should identify as and live consistent with the individual's internal sense of gender, and that an individual can delay natural puberty and develop sex characteristics of the opposite sex through the use of puberty lockers, cross-sex hormones, and surgical procedures." The law also prohibits providing any program, curriculum, test, survey, questionnaire, promotion, or instruction related to sexual orientation to students in kindergarten through grade six, including homosexuality, bisexuality, and heterosexuality as defined in Iowa Code 216.2. My intention with providing facts of this law is to share with city council, city staff, and primarily the citizens of Cedar Falls with the changes in Iowa law that have been made this year regarding the protections afforded and which of our neighbors are no longer protected under Iowa discrimination law based on gender identity. As the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission, it is our duty and our requirement under Iowa state law and under Cedar Falls City Ordinance to receive and file complaints of discrimination of and by community members and advocate for those who need us. It is now more than ever important to reinforce that 100% of us have rights, 100% of us have protections under Iowa state law, 100% of us have protections under federal law. If you feel like you are being discriminated against, that you have been targeted, that you are being attacked, that you feel unwelcome, you will find support with us. We have the access and resources and the knowledge to find help and reach out to the right people and organizations to protect you, even if you simply want somebody to hold your hand and listen to you, really good at that, too. That is not the end of the presentation. We have another law to discuss. The second bill I will be discussing tonight is House File 856.
Look quick for the sake of time tonight, do you think five minutes is enough?
Okay. This law regards certain topics that are no longer able to be discussed or promoted by city officials, including state officials. Certain topics include implicit bias, cultural appropriation, allyship, transgender ideology, microaggression, marginalization, anti-racism, systemic oppression, social justice, intersectionality, neopronouns, heteronormativity, disparate impact, gender theory, racial privilege, and sexual privilege. The idea within this law and the statement behind the law was regarding immediate actions that we needed to take as the Human Rights Commission to comply with this law, updates to our website that we needed to take as the executive committee to update with that, including allocating taxpayer funds to change our promotional materials and our events and things that we are doing. There are two points that I want to make clear before finishing my time. The first is that this law is incredibly far-reaching and vague in its language on what is and what is not acceptable terminology within the human rights space. Terms such as intersectionality, disparate impact, and social justice are terms that are found not only within the typically understood diversity, equity, and inclusion landscape. These terms are also found in economic policy, housing policy, land use policy, and even road construction policy. It is exceedingly difficult to understand how far-reaching this law is on its impact on public policy, both statewide and within the city of Cedar Falls. There will be times when members of the public may ask for an opinion or the guidance of city staff members or officials who may not be able to receive a response. And finally, and most importantly, if anyone watching or listening remembers nothing else about the extraordinary amount of time that I have spent discussing state law tonight, I want them to know this, the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission has one purpose, and that is to support and advocate for rights of the citizens of Cedar Falls. When you need help, we will be there. When you don't know if you need help, we will be there. When your neighbor needs help, we will be there. There's not a single person in the city that we cannot help when they need it. My email address for contact is TW.ingham@cedarfalls.com. The phone number for the Human Rights Commission is 319-268-5113. That will leave a voicemail for the advocacy committee, who are specially trained to work with you and support when you need it most. At this time, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I thank you for your time, and I open it up for questions. Any questions regarding legality, I will ask that you speak to Mr. Rogers. Any questions regarding our response for the Human Rights Commission, you may ask me at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingham. And open up, council, any questions, clarifications? I know this is something we've spoken a lot with the Human Rights Commission on because a lot of the changes to state law are very vague in some of the direction and restrictions on terminology. There is still some federal law that conflicts in some ways with that around protected classes, so working closely with the Human Rights Commission to make sure we're understanding what can and can't be done within the context of the new state laws. Any questions, comments from council? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingham.
Thanks, Commissioner Ingham, for all your work. We will now move to public forum, and speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up for five minutes on topics relevant to city businesses. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight?
Hi, Jim Kearns, 3123 Cottonwood Lane. I wanted to come down and just talk a little bit about our leadership in the city. We experienced an event about a week and a half ago, RagBri, where we had 30,000-plus visitors from all over the world visit our city. Wonderful thing, the city handled it gracefully. The infrastructure that we have in place was well-suited to handle that many people, the volunteers that came out, the food service, the music, law enforcement, public safety. And from what I understand and talking to people that rode and were here, it was amazing. And so, that's really something. Again, we talked about this before, these things don't happen by accident, they happen by intention. And what that intention is, a forward-leading, forward-thinking, progressive city that plans to be able to take advantage of things, looking into the future. What's going to happen? What can we do to make our city more appealing, not only for businesses out in the industrial park, but for the cultural activities, the recreational activities? A good leader has to have that, be forward-thinking, have perseverance, can really stick to it and get the job done, and must exercise a great deal of creativity, not to mention team building. And building a team is tough. You know, we've got a great staff. You know, to work with that staff day in, day out, develop those people, allow those people to make mistakes, share the authority, but make sure you know you're the one that's responsible, and then learn from the mistakes and grow into other positions. That's a wonderful attribute to have. There's just such, I can't say enough about how powerful that demonstration was through the RagBri day and evening that we experienced here. And I'd just like to thank the leadership. I particularly want to thank Ron Gaines. He was a terrific city administrator, and I know in the committee of the whole meeting, we talked about a process to hire another city administrator. My process would be to try to talk Ron Gaines into coming back. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Rosemary Beech wanted me to mention, we need a public restroom downtown this handicap accessible.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name an address, please.
My name is Priscilla Neiman, 825 Bluegrass Circle, Unit 221. I'm bringing to the council and the staff today a concern of mine. Last Thursday night, I was exiting St. Stephen's The Witness in the rear. Across the way were men with rifles pointed at a house. There was no perimeter protecting the public. Quite honestly, we were scared. We also did not know what to do. Finally, we all got brave enough and left. But the concern of myself and my group is we want law enforcement to carry out their jobs, but we also want the public to be protected. So as of tonight, we don't know what was going on. All we know is we were worried and concerned. We thought the city council should know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neiman. Director Burridge, off the top of your head, do you know, speak to anything?
I haven't heard anything or been contacted about anything, and I don't know. You know, if I was to guess, I would guess probably a felony vehicle stop, stopping a vehicle, a high-risk vehicle, but this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay.
I can sure check into it, and I'll find out what time she's talking about.
Perfect. Thank you, Director. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Name the address, please.
Yep, Gabe Roadhouse, still a home away drive. Yeah, these are the comments hoping to make last meeting. I know, Mr. Mayor, and we chatted, just trying to be respectful, I'd ask if we could do a little bit more town hall style to have some back and forth, and didn't it seem to be some interest in that? So I want to just clarify some of the things as people watch the videos on the discussion. Yeah, a couple of things you were sharing that, a lot of you shared that you were unified that you don't want this new form of government. And I understand that, and I appreciate you sharing that and saying that publicly. You also made it sound like, as we were switching to this, and I'm going to grab my phone here, you were mentioning that there's different forms of governments and some that people would feel comfortable with, and you feel comfortable with this. Just a fact I wanted to share, the IMCA, the International City Council Management Association, shared that the council manager form of government is now the most widely adopted model used by more cities, villages, and townships, and it's the fastest-growing form of government in the United States. It's, I think sometimes painted out there like I'm proposing something extremely radical. This is a growing form of government that's being adopted by a lot of cities across the state. The other consensus I heard is that all of you really like Danny, which is great. I like Danny, too, so y'all really like Danny, but none of you want him to vote. That was what I heard loud and clear. I would proffer to you, let's go down to any school board meeting in the state, and there's the chief executive there who takes part and votes. There's actually over 81 mayors in the state of Iowa who vote right now. Their cities are not falling apart. It can be done in a way that is actually beneficial, and if we act like the mayor voting would destroy our city, I said, let's just go look at some other cities, let's look at school boards who do that. The comment was also made that salaries, this isn't a discussion of salary, we can change salary anytime, let's do it then. Why can't we refer that this meeting? If that's really what's behind the petition, if that's what, maybe it would take the wind out of the sails out of everything then, if you just lower the mayor's salary right now. I don't think it will. I think the community really wants this change, but it seems like everyone's on board to have that discussion around salary. You mentioned how, as we compare to other cities, these different things, there are things we do that are different than other cities. Having the highest-paid mayor is one of them. We have a public safety director, that's very different than other cities. We have these things that are different. At times, we need to review that and see, is that where we want to be? Man, I was thinking, when was the last time I heard this much unification from the first ward, the third ward, the fourth ward, the fifth ward, and one of our at-large? There's not a lot of times I hear that much unity down here on a controversial topic. The last time I heard that much unification was when you elected to raise your own salaries a couple of years ago, and I have heard that that conversation is coming back again. And I will be here with others to tell you, again, it is a terrible look to our community when our elected officials are saying as a unified priority, raising their salary is part of their agenda. While we're having this discussion on salary, let's go out there and have that discussion. And the point that didn't get brought up, your salaries and the mayor is tied to the cost of living adjustment. It's kind of an interesting thing. Every year, you get a raise automatically. That has not happened for the average person in this city. It's been shared, your opinions on this, it sounds like you've already made up your mind, sounds like you're fine with the referendum being on there, but none of you will support it. I would just ask, how many of your constituents have you talked to about that? Would you come out and door knock with us even just one time and just listen to what people in the community are saying? We are not putting our petition on our porch and asking people to sign it. We are going out and knocking on doors to talk to people about it, and we're trying to share that with you. I would encourage any of you to come. I'd encourage you to refer the change in salary for the mayor tonight. And if you have any question on a voting member, why don't you come to me with any school board meeting you can pick in the state of Iowa, and you can see that the president of the school board can vote with the school board, and it does not wreck the entire continuity of that governing body. And every school board member, including those in our great city of Cedar Falls, work for free. I think they do as much work as any of you guys, and so this... And so this idea that you're going to bring back now, at the same time as you did two years ago, raising your own salary, actually makes me pretty sick to think about. I thought we were past that as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roadhouse. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name the address, please.
Kim Jordan, Minnetoka Drive, Cedar Falls. Back on to looking at resolutions, things that we can do, things that are not quite running properly, and the things that appear to be okay but not. School board, city council, University of Northern Iowa, public safety, utilities. Seems like there's another one. We're mixing, and we're kind of a group of people that are all using the same type of scenario, where we're taking the good, maybe moving a school over to the city. The city moves some property over to the school. It's not for, like, the good of, like, saving the property, because it usually involves a demolition. Boundary lines are certainly things that can be drawn. Keeping sites are definitely vital to how the community is in growth. And looking at some of the things that are situations that we have. Public safety is part of the hospital system. It's part of time wasted when we don't have police able to go to a hospital within Cedar Falls. If currently we're not able to get a new build, and we're going to take away a certificate of need and move it to a new site, there's going to be lost time. We lost a lot of senior leadership when we had the whole, like, change of city government. And that's irreplaceable. There were also senior people that took loss in their pensions. There were people that could have advanced, but younger people came in above them. And there was an individual that was here only for a one-year period of time, and it was part of a movement. We have a building, a hospital, that's a very vital part to this community that is an area where things can go besides a new build that would be closer to the public safety. It's currently not on a tax base at all. It does not generate anything, but it's right now assessed around $12,900,000. No renovations to it. It's one of these things that, when you look at the different capital improvements that we've been doing and public safety dollars, we should know about what happened up at the College Hill, because we have a consolidated program that we are sharing our resources with the university. That's unlike anything else. I just came from the University of Iowa Hospitals today, and I asked some of their administration. I said, "Are you partnering with the city?" No. The city does not go and buy their land. The hospital is one of the biggest amenities, probably well-known in the state. We have a certificate of need that we are underappreciating, and we're not protecting it like it's our own. It's like senior leadership that we're letting go. And it's something that, when I'm talking to them, they understand how we are set up by certificates that have been here for 112 years that overlap all of the different surrounding communities. The surrounding communities that don't have a voice right here at this table. So when I look at the STAR form, situation, task, action, result, why don't we take that hospital board that's sitting there? Move it to the Mercy, because they have no back to Sartori. The foundation money comes back to, right now it's owned by the city, but it shouldn't be going to a healthcare system that has their own money. The University of Iowa does not receive any. Mayo Clinic does not receive any from Rochester. We are all independent, but we are really convoluted in every situation. And we're not putting the value into these buildings. I think that there's also a need for, let's see, grab this real quick, a little bit more, the zoning changes. When you look at that, they're historically kept at E, which is educational and emergency. Those are the sites that never should change, because that's what neighborhoods are founded on. That's what the overlap for these community people are coming in.
Ms. Jordan, at this time.
When, I think there should be community outreach and have surrounding people on the new board for the Sartori Hospital when a new place is emerged from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move to staff updates. I believe we've got a few here tonight. Director, if you want to jump in first?
I want to give one update to a question that was asked, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
I checked on the dispatch log here, and she's correct. At 6:14 PM last Thursday, we had officers along with a task force helping the U.S. Marshals in apprehending somebody in an apartment that would have been just behind the Catholic church up there. So unfortunately, what she probably saw was some of the officers, you know, giving protective, you know, being on the back of the house if somebody would jump out the back of the house.
Okay.
So they were assisting U.S. Marshals. And just to clarify, it has nothing to do with ICE and just a routine arrest of somebody that needed to go back to prison.
Okay. Thank you for checking on that, Director. And then, Director, if you want to jump in, we've got an update for National Night Out.
So on a brighter topic, tomorrow night, National Night Out. National Night Out is a nationwide event trying to connect the community with their police. And we'll be having an event out at the Public Safety Center at 4600 South Main. And the event will start, it'll be from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM. Cedar Falls Fire Police, Mercy One Ambulance, U.N.I. Police, Hy-Vee, Starbucks. And we just ask the public to enter through the large doors where the fire trucks normally go, park on adjacent streets. But if you're able, stop out between 4:30 and 7:00 tomorrow night out at Public Safety.
Thank you, Director. And then, we've got two awesome announcements. I'll let you two fight for who goes first.
I get to go first. We're excited to share with the community that Cedar Falls was selected by the Iowa League of Cities as a 2025 All-Star Community related to the Gateway River Park. This award, just a little bit about it, recognizes and celebrates outstanding achievements in municipal government. It highlights the dedication, creativity, and innovation of cities across Iowa that work tirelessly to enhance the quality of life for their residents. So we submitted an application highlighting our new Gateway River Park, which is our exciting new recreational amenity that was years in the making, so lots of hard work, and I think that it's definitely worth the praise that it is receiving now. And we appreciate all the community involvement that made this project happen as well, because there was community fundraising that occurred. This exciting reinvestment in our river is something that we highlighted with RagBri just a week and a half ago now, to dip the bikes in the river, not just on either end of the state, but also in Cedar Falls. So we were excited to do that. So Cedar Falls is being featured in Iowa League of Cities' social media channels, also on their Streetscape magazine, which we have a highlight up here at the back of the magazine there. And also, this official award will be given to us at the league's annual conference in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. One more reason, if you guys haven't signed up for the conference yet, to think about doing it. And Jen?
Sure. One of the new things that we did this year was take our audit report, which is about 170 pages long, and condense it down into a 10- or 12-page document that's just really more visually appealing, probably just more user-friendly. And, you know, it's got pictures in it, but it's just a lot of our financial information. And it's just a way, I think, to just allow our citizens maybe easier to understand some of our finances and not have to try to look through a 170-page document. And again, it relates to our audit. So it's on our website, but we submitted it to the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association and did find out that we received an award for outstanding achievement and popular reporting. And so I just want to give a shout-out to Lisa Roding and Grayson Rolet, who worked on the project.
Thank you, guys. So, and again, I think anyone that's spent even longer than I have on this council knows you guys do an incredible job with our county financing. We just had the auditors in town, and even the auditors were complimenting how great of a job Cedar Falls does, so. And, you know, especially when they make the comment that usually there's some in any community, like one thing here or there, and they said, "We really haven't seen anything," so. So great job to you and the team for...
Thanks for jinxing us on that.
So if anything happens, it's not my fault. All right, and then, otherwise, I believe that moves us to Special Order of Business, item number two, public hearing on the proposed condemnation of property located at 315 East Dunkerton Road. Do we have a motion received in file communications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I guess after the motions, we have to do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, any written?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then for this, for staff comments, we've got Jamie Castle. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, I'll be presenting a property for potential condemnation. This is for 315 East Dunkerton Road. On July 10th, 2025, condemnation committee inspected 315 East Dunkerton Road with an administrative search warrant. This, the owner was provided a notice of this hearing on July 23rd and is present for comments after my presentation. So per our city ordinance, we're required to have three council members, myself, the fire chief, and a county health officer, which were all present at the inspection. Many of you may recall this property, as it has already been through one condemnation hearing. This property has been an ongoing nuisance with a long history of issues. The council packet had a much more detailed history, but I want to go over some highlights tonight. So the earliest items that we have are in the 1990s. We had, Public Works has cleaned this property three times, starting in the 1990s. In April of 2017, we have the first recorded violation in our current violation system. December of 2020, the owner was served a citation for garbage and storage on the exterior of the building. In January of '21, there was a court order for the owner to abate the nuisance, or the city was provided the opportunity to abate that nuisance, which the city did move forward with. In November 15th of 2021, due to some findings at that cleanup, we did have a condemnation hearing, and the property was declared a nuisance by council. The property was cleaned as required by the condemnation ruling. I should note that it did take over a year and a half to get the property into compliance. At the beginning of this year, we received more complaints about the property regarding the exterior and concerns for the occupant's safety. So once I received those complaints, I did head out to the property to check in with the owner. I visited the site and spoke with the owner. I talked to her about my concerns about the safety of the property and her safety in the house. I gave her 30 days to clean the property to make some change. When I returned in April, there was no progress made, and I did mark the property as unsafe for occupancy. In May of 2025, I did visit again. Still, there was minimal to no change regarding the cleanliness on the exterior and the interior of not only the home, but also the accessory buildings. At that time, I requested a condemnation committee, and that led us to have the inspection on July 10th. Some of the violations found during that inspection, these are several pictures from the exterior. You'll see that there are quite a few piles in addition to all of the grass and weeds exceed our allowed eight inches. The piles throughout, there's a wide variety of items. Some of them are items for interiors that are stored outside. There's a lot of trash and cans and items just throughout the entire property. In addition to the home, there are multiple buildings on the property. There's one very large one, and then three smaller ones. All of those were cleaned with the last condemnation, but they have begun to have additional items. Animals were seen in them. I don't believe that the one garage door can close because of items. And so these are just some examples of those buildings. Inside the home, I do want to note that some of these pictures are from an earlier inspection. I realized I didn't have all of the areas, so it is a combination. But the first three photos are from the day of the condemnation committee inspections. You'll see the items at the front porch. In the kitchen, the sink didn't appear to be working. There are basins in there, and the counters were full. The refrigerator was not storing food as it was designed. It was more of a cabinet than a refrigeration area. The last photo is a photo of the dining room, and you can see the piles and the items and how tall they are. Moving on, these are some other areas of the home. The first one is a hallway. The second one is the kitchen again. This one wasn't earlier photo. And then two from the living room. The last photo, you'll see that there are some animals in the home that were, they were new animals. I'm not 100% sure on what the care of the animals are. We did have animal control there. They did not take any of the animals, because there was food and water available to them. But there are some concerns about where the animals are using the bathroom, because there was feces found throughout. With that, staff would like to make the following recommendation, that city council first declares the property a nuisance. Once city council declares it a nuisance, we would like you to order the abatement of the nuisance. We recommend a three-step deadline. And the reason for this is because with the last condemnation, it really did drag out for a long time. So I'd like to have a more defined ruling, so that we can have something closer to follow. So the first deadline, so by September 4th, which would be 30 days, the home is clean and sanitary. The second deadline, if deadline one is met, then the additional 30 days is given to clean out the accessory buildings. Deadline three, if deadline one and two are met, given additional 30 days to clean the exterior areas. I do know that the condemnation committee and I discussed how those deadlines would work, and initially, we did discuss having the exterior cleaned first. However, I did rearrange this, because the exterior is not part of an unsafe structure, and so that's just accessory to the issue. So moving forward, if deadlines one and/or two are not met, the staff would be moved forward with the demolition per ordinance 7-20A-15. And if the first two deadlines are met, but the third is not met, start the citation process for the exterior cleanup. So that would still get the exterior cleaned up, but again, it's not tied to the condemnation process on an unsafe structure. All right, that is all.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll move us to, I believe, if the property owners here, only the property owner may speak on this item tonight, if you would like to, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, I'm Diana Flatt, and I live at 315 East Dunkerton Road, and I've lived there my whole life. It is my sanctuary. My plants and flowers cover the whole yard, and I do my best to manage the property. And I have been deeply hurt by this situation, and I plan to keep on working on the yard and the house cleanup. My housing property are not managed like most people's, but I have, okay, not been injured in my house or had any fires. I am not in trouble for drinking or drugs in my house. It's not a danger to anyone. It can be on record that the fire department does not have to go into my house if there ever was a fire. Please let me continue to live in my house. I have made progress and want to continue to work with the city to finish what we started. And I was in special education. I am doing the best I can since my mother died a few years ago. Long-life patterns are not easy to change. And this has been stressful for me and has put me into depression. And that makes it harder for me to clean up, and I have nowhere else to go if you condemn my house, and I have no other options for housing, and I cannot afford another place. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we have the owner identify herself?
Yes, could you just name, please?
Yeah, Diana Flatt.
Thank you, Diana. All right, so then I'll look for a motion for the resolution declaring the structure and property located at 315 East Dunkerton Road to be a nuisance due to the property being unsafe, due to insanitary conditions, inadequate means of egress, inadequate ventilation constituting a fire hazard, is dangerous to human life, and/or involves improper occupancy pursuant to the Cedar Falls Code of Ordinance, Section 720A-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for council discussion.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I think in the past, we've had these situations where we've asked the community to reach out for volunteers that could help, and I know that volunteers in our Cedar have helped out Diana in the past, and I'd ask that we maybe pursue that as well to, there's a lot of work to be done there, and many hands make for lesser work, so I'll speak with them, and I know others, like Mr. Benton, has worked with you, so we will, we'll try to get this accomplished, okay?
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussions, questions, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Thinking Chief Slonex in the foyer, I'm just going to give him just a second. Curious, we'd had some initial conversation about this during the condemnation committee's inspection of the property. If there were to be a structural fire somewhere within that property, I appreciate the resident's comment that says we wouldn't have to respond. Would you even have an ability to safely respond to a emergency in that area as it sits today?
No, so when I was in there, it's very hard to find any alleyways in there, and I know she said we wouldn't have to go in, but we would obviously go in and try and rescue her and any animals or pets that are in there. But yes, it would be extremely difficult in a fire with all the fire load that's in the house, and depending on where, where we were trying to get to, if we're trying to get to a person or get to the seat of the fire, it'd be extremely hard. That's kind of why I mentioned, I think, to the group that was there, it'd be more of a defensive fire. We would obviously go in and try and get somebody out, but short of that, even a medical call would be really hard to access a cot or even a stair chair to get in and out of there, just with the stuff that's in there. But yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussions, discussion questions from council? All right, seeing none, and I believe Attorney Rogers, we do not have any public comment on these items, correct?
Correct.
Seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries, which moves us to the next item, so that one was for assigning the nuisance, and this next item then is for the abatement process. So, do we have a motion for resolution ordering abatement of said nuisance by the owner in three phases, with each phase being 30 days in length. If the owner fails to timely complete any phase of abatement, the nuisance shall be abated by the city by demolition of all structures on the property at the owner's cost. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any council discussion? All right, also seeing none requires a roll call vote. Yep, go ahead.
If it progresses to the point of demolition, then the current resident, where do, where do they go? What do we do for that? Is there, I don't know who to ask, even.
Jamie, I don't know if you can speak to that at all, or Director.
Well, I know that our building official has tried to explore that, but she's currently, the owner is currently not homeless, so there are no services available. We're not sure at the time if it were demolished, and then that situation changes to be homeless, then perhaps there are some agencies, but we don't know for sure.
Thank you, Director.
A little disconcerting there, for obvious reasons, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, thoughts, comments from council? Seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, that motion does carry. Thank you. And I do believe too, Counselor Schultz will let you follow up and do things, I appreciate the offer. So, that moves us to old business. Item number three, pass ordinance number 3116, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Panther Farms Phase One Urban Renewal Area in the City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans. Money is advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Panther Farms Phase One Urban Renewal Area upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, just in advance, is it possible to change the nuggets that are changing in the next two items?
And not repeat them, and exact, word for word. Attorney Rogers, is it okay if I paraphrase?
Sure is.
Any other discussion for item number three? All right, any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none requires a roll call vote, please. Are you getting tired of me reading that?
No, I'm just helping you out.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number four, pass ordinance number 3117, all those same things except for Panther Farms Phase Two Urban Renewal Area upon its third and final consideration. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name, please.
Kim Jordan. I just really have a problem with not having a road go through in one, as one completed option, without having to have Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three progressively move the road to connect.
Ms. Jordan, these are specifically for just the property tax-loving district, not specifically for the layout of the property?
It's, yeah, that's just really, all that all got put together.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any other public comment for this item tonight? All right, seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number five, pass ordinance number 3118, all the same things again, except for the Panther Farms Phase Three Urban Renewal Area upon its third and final consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number six, pass ordinance number 3119, all the same things except for Phase Four of the Panther Farms Urban Renewal Area upon its third and final consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number seven, pass ordinance number 3120, amending the zoning map for approximately 0.69 acres of real estate located south of Quail Hollow Lane and north of the new Cedar Falls High School from P., Public District to R.2., Residence District upon its second consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'd just like to go on record and say, I don't think this is a problem the way they've adjusted the plan to this, but I do not, I do not plan to support this idea because it's changing public infrastructure because somebody overstepped the boundaries and started building on it, and there wasn't a, holding them accountable. I think a good law is only as good as the enforcement of that law, and I know the property owners have their own rights, but I don't want to have precedent set by this, and I wish others would join me in denying this request.
Thank you, Counselor. Did you have something, council member?
Sure. I actually, you know, it is what it is, and I thank the university for taking the road of wanting to be a good neighbor as opposed to taking the opposite tack, which would be to force people to remove the improvements that are there. Things happen. Nobody really is getting a benefit because the property owners are having to pay for it, and the university's willing to do it, so I think it's important for the city to support the good neighbor policy of the university, so that's why I am in favor of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, comments from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3121, amending Chapter 10, Garbage and Refuse of the Code of Ordinance as relative to disposal by business establishments upon its second consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. We'll now move to the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice of vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone would like to request one be considered separately. Are there any requests from council? Nine. Nine. Are you trying to beat Hannah to that?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was going to say. I was waiting for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Item 10.
10. Nine, 10. Any others from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items nine through 12 of the consent calendar excluding items nine and 10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to item number nine. Look for a motion to approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. Dusky Steele for the Housing Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor?
I've known Dusky for heading on 20 years. I think this is a great fit. She's been one of the leaders of the House of Hope and does a fantastic job with that organization, and I think this is a perfect fit for her, and I appreciate her stepping, stepping up for this, and Mayor, for your work with, with her on this assignment. Hannah?
And if anyone else is interested in volunteering, you can go to the city's website at cedarfalls.com.
Thank you, Counselors. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name.
I have. I haven't heard anything back.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other public comments for tonight on this item? All right, seeing none requires a voice vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Item number 10, motion received in file communication from the mayor relative to establishing the Cedar Falls Development Task Force. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, and Counselor?
You know, I know this is a receiving file, so you may cut me off. I'm just wondering, and again, I understand if I'm out of order.
Okay.
We had consensus, and I double-checked because I thought, maybe I imagined it, but I did go and find it in the goal-setting document from last year for a new comprehensive zoning ordinance to work that up. I'm wondering, is that still a plan, since that's in the goal-setting document? I understand. I'm just wondering. Because this is kind of ish tied together. This is just one part of that in my...
So, Director Sheets, could you just speak to, I know we do still have it in the plan to look at the comp plan at some point, but you just want to, that was further down the, excuse me, I'm swinging my mic.
I'm sorry. I don't think, it's not the comp plan. It was to go through.
Zoning ordinance.
Okay, zoning, yes.
Rewrite of the zoning.
Yep, so I can speak to that. So, that is the goal. A lot of the input we'll get from this will then be able to take and use in the zoning process, so we don't really plan to make a lot of one-off zoning changes here and there. The goal would be to get a lot of this input. There are some maybe just process changes we might just make right away if there's something just in the process of how we do it that we can say, okay, that's the way this community is doing that would be great. We'll look at adopting that process. But any of the zoning changes, that would kind of be the plan, is to put those together, get that input, and then we'll look at making a more comprehensive.
Good, and the key for me there is comprehensive.
Yep, and I know, just to speak to that quick, that, that planned zoning change is really an overhaul and a complete comprehensive look at it, and that's why we want to make sure we get out the input, but that would be, I think we're looking at starting that process kind of middle to late next year.
I think it's in the CIP to start fiscal '27.
Okay, thank you, Director. And I can speak to this item quick. It is just receiving and filing it, but just wanted to make sure, kind of let everyone know the setup of it. So, worked really closely with staff, and we've kind of outlined the five main phases of the development process. We are opening it up, rather than kind of cherry-picking who's on it, we're just opening it up to anybody who's had a new construction permit for a residential or commercial, and also anyone who's done any sort of process that's gone through zoning change, site plan approval, plating, and then, so we'll send an open invitation to kind of everybody going back kind of about two and a half years for that process. We've got each of the five stages, and you can jump in and correct me if I say anything wrong. You sound, you look like you have that look of, he said something that's not quite accurate, but we've got the three meetings kind of planned out, and then the goal would be to about February, March next year, kind of bring back that comprehensive set of recommended changes, updates, but there may also be specific one-off process changes that we're like, oh, that would make sense. We can do that now. But then there may also be zoning change recommendations, things that have to go through P&amp;Z council, but what kind of the plan would be to get all that feedback and be able to bring back a report at the end of that. So, any questions from?
Mr. Mayor, you're saying that developers as well as individuals and citizens?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we'll include developers, builders, contractors, architects are on there too. Anyone that was involved in some of those projects will be a part of it. If they were involved in kind of the application, I know like architects are often involved in the application process and some of the engineering contractors.
And this might be a stretch, but what about developers that no longer reside in the community and can give feedback?
Those aren't on the list, partly just with the wanting to make sure we knew a standard cutoff of, okay, who are we inviting, who aren't we inviting, but I would say also, this isn't a cure-all. We wouldn't be able to, like, this won't give us feedback on every single item, but this is really the handle, the bulk of that development process and get that feedback. There may always be additional conversations we need to pull in there, have.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had some sort of invitation to have written feedback from people that are no longer in the community who've left that used to develop for years and years.
Like a survey essentially getting feedback.
Something like that, right.
Yep, okay.
Don't use the word survey.
Mr. Mayor.
Fair enough, yeah.
Just a couple of items. I wanted to double-check. There is an item in there for the remaining membership selection that any builder who's pulled a permit for new home or commercial in that same time period of 23, January 23 through July of '26, would include those folks that are no longer in the area, should they be interested. So, they are included in the initial.
Correct, yeah, if they pulled something in that period.
One clarification, Attorney Rogers, I'd like to just verify, since I've apparently become a stickler for the law. With this being a body that's formed by mayoral task force, is it subservient to the same rules? And what I'm asking specifically is the quorum that can meet outside of open meetings for this group, since it's not simply a fact-finding body. Will that be of the 20 members, only nine of them may meet outside of that open meeting, or is it the three voting members that are the quorum?
I would say that because it's appointed by the mayor, so it's executive appointment to make recommendations, it's subject to open records, open meetings. So, I don't know what the voting part of this is going to be, but to the extent that those others who don't vote would influence the vote, I'd be real careful about out of public meetings. But I can answer, once it's set up, I can answer specific questions about that. Just, but you're right, front of mind is open records, open meetings.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And thank you for checking that. We will plan to do all these meetings as open public meetings, so they will have open times posted. People can attend. We'll be recording the audio for each of them, so we've got that open public process, and then the Chair, Council Member Chris, will be able to, to kind of decide through that process to allow public comment, not kind of depending how the group works out, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
The, the starting point, January of '23, that's not very far back, to discuss things that have probably evolved over the years. I think there should be inclusion for other comments that might be relevant to the topic.
And part of that was just trying to keep the group size manageable, but I do, like I said, I do think there's maybe some conversations we can pull in there, yeah.
Absolutely. That's only a year and a half ago.
Mr. Mayor, one, one more fix, maybe? You have me listed as Ward Five? Which is flattering, but.
So, I apologize, Counselor. This is why you don't ask. So, I will, yes, I will correct that to.
You're already regretting having me on.
Well, that's a Scribner's error.
That's a Scribner's.
Just, I'm the Scribner.
Yeah.
So, yes, we will up that. Thank you for that. Any other discussions from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Just name an address, please.
Hello, Bob Manning, 2908 West Third Street, Cedar Falls. I just wanted to clarify, it seems like a lot of people were clarifying.
I just wanted to clarify, and it seems like a lot of people were clarifying, but this task force is going to be made up of the groups that you mentioned. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. It'll be builders, contractors, engineering consultants, architects that have been active in projects here in the last couple of years.
Okay.
And then the, there will be a three-panel member of the council who will kind of review the recommendations, working with staff based on the input, and then they'll officially bring the recommendation forward, but the conversation will really be driven by the developers, builders, contractors, and getting their feedback.
Great. Excellent. Thank you very much. That's a very forward-looking project, and we'll have some forward-looking results from it, we hope. So thank you, council and mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Just to give you a sense of the kind of layout of the meetings, each one will probably be a short presentation at the beginning from staff on, here's how our current process works, the structure, probably about 15, 20 minutes, and then each meeting is about an hour and a half, so then a lot of open time for that feedback from the development community. Otherwise, any other comment, public comment tonight? Just name, please.
Craig Fairbanks. Mr. Mayor, I've looked forward to this for a long time, and I'm glad that it's appropriate that we're doing this. I hope that good things can come out of it for everyone, and I just hope and pray that the people who would work through these processes, who actually have the experience, get to have good input, and that's, that's all we ask for. But most importantly is hopefully these things lead to growth. Any organization, any city that's not growing is dying, and we can't afford to do the nice things that we do without having revenue, which comes from large development projects as well as homes and other things that are out there. And hopefully, at the end of the day, we won't need to incentivize people to develop in Cedar Falls. They'll want to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbanks. Any other public comment for this item tonight? All right, seeing none, bring back council, any further conversation? Otherwise, requires a voice vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. That moves us to the resolution calendar, so the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote and a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that be considered separately. Are there any from council? Twenty-four. Twenty-four. Mr. Mayor, number 27. So we've got 24 and 27. Any others from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve items 13 through 33 of the resolution calendar excluding items 24 and 27.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and it requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Go to item number 24, resolution in support of a resource enhancement and protection REAP grant application to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Big Woods Campground Expansion Project. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and open for council discussion. Counselor Schultz?
Well, I don't mean to put Mr. Heath on the spot, but I'm putting Mr. Heath on the spot. Could you speak to what the status of the Big Woods project is and how long now?
Thank you, Councilman Schultz. Just a little recap on this project. It's, it's a campground expansion, 23 sites additional to what's out there. We're kind of taking the common area that's there now and expanding that along with additional sites that are being developed within the wooded area there. We met with the REAP Committee last Wednesday and got their blessing to move forward with the grant application, which is due on August 15th. So with Grayson Rowlett assisting with this project, we were putting all the items together, and we'll be poised and ready to go with, with the application by the 15th.
That's all I'm...
That's all you needed?
Yep.
You're simple to please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions, discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item carries. Motion. Item number 27, resolution approving and authorizing execution of a utility stormwater and stormwater drainage easement agreement and a sanitary sewer easement agreement with the State of Iowa Board of Regents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor Grantfield?
Just planning to vote no on this item, Mr. Mayor.
What was that?
Just planning to vote no on this item in concert with the ordinance change.
Thank you. Any other discussions from council on this item? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Moves us to ordinances. Item number 34, passing ordinance amending Chapter 23, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking prohibited on specific streets upon its first consideration. Do we motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Move to bills and claims. Do we have a motion to allow bills and claims for August 4th?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council?
I'd like to echo the comments that folks have made regarding, well, first off, I want to thank Matt Tolan for his work on the, he gets called out specifically on the, on the river and...
Gil, is this for bills and claims?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I thought we passed that.
No, we're still voting on bills and claims.
Oh, let's vote on it. I got to talk about it.
Gil already voted on bills and claims.
Is there any discussion on bills and claims from council?
I thought you were going to say just what a good job that the RagBri crew did and want to get paid.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's nice to write the check.
Let's get them paid.
Get them paid.
And any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Council updates and announcements. Counselor Schultz, the floor is yours.
Now I'm going to thank Matt for all the work he's done on that river for all these years. So along with that, all the work that folks did on the RagBri experience, Diane and I had, I think, 16 or 17 people camping out in our yard and in our garage, and they were a wonderful crew out from Milwaukee, from Rochester, from Stuartville, and just they couldn't speak highly enough about our city and our downtown and our river. So I appreciate those folks. So that's all I got to say, and I voted yes for bills and claims.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll just second everything about RagBri, because same with Serge's. I got nothing but incredibly positive feedback from local residents, the writers, the organizing team, RagBri themselves. You know, would probably love to come back as soon as they can. We'll give staff a little, Stephanie will...
Give her a break?
Well, we'll give a little bit of a break, a few months. So just again, thank you to, not staff, the planning committee, Main Street, a couple hundred volunteers, so a lot of community members that put the work into that. So thanks, everyone. Any other council updates, announcements?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
More of a question, if I may. Mr. Rogers, here, I don't know, six months ago, we had concerns from the public, and I continue to get questions about the location of vape shops and the bright LED lights. And anytime a shop opens up, it seems mandatory to put the LED lights in because that's their logo or their theme. And can you give an update for the people out there that are kind of wondering if we're progressing with something and what it might be?
Unfortunately, the only update I can give you is, I think, I think Stephanie's group's working on it.
Okay, well done.
We've provided the mayor with a schedule of a variety of projects that community development's responsible for and the timing of when the vape shop referral could be taken up. I don't remember off the top of my head when that timing was, but it was a while yet because the developer task force is going to take quite a bit of energy from our staff.
And I can speak though too. We are, I'm keeping in touch with Mayor Hart and Marleau because they are moving ahead with reviewing some of their changes as well. So we're kind of watching what they're doing to see if there's some similar verbiage and things that we may be able to look at doing.
Is it pertaining to distance from schools and education facilities and churches and?
I think they're, I can't speak for certainty, but I think they're planning to do something similar. I know they've got some restrictions on, I believe, I believe liquor and tobacco for similar things, distances. So it'd be probably a similar setup.
Okay. And how, what's, I'm trying to think of the right word, permissible to go outside of the State of Iowa? I mean, each state's going to have different laws. Leaning on something that's effective in New York City, let's say, or anywhere else, is that easily done through legal, what's it called, the law search things? I can't think of the name of them right now. Westlaw.
We can borrow successful ordinances from elsewhere in the country for sure, probably start more local than that. I think Iowa City might have passed some ordinances already around the area that you just discussed, I think. Again, there's, there's information gathering going on, but
Okay.
we're not going to restrict our search. I mean, if there's good stuff going on, we'll grab it.
Yeah, good. Hopefully the people that asked me are watching.
Okay, any other council updates and announcements? Otherwise, any pressing referrals? Seeing none, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, all those, do we need, I can't remember, do we ask for public input before we adjourn? I feel like we never did, but it's one of those things, it's like, I should ask at some point to make sure, not doing it wrong. But all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.